...organizations are doing a tremendous job to try to meet the need, but they can always use the help. And so many of our residents are very generous with food donations, and we love that. We ask them to continue, but also think about other needs that many of our fellow citizens may need, and especially the youngest, most vulnerable in our communities. So I'm happy to pronounce this week National Diaper Need Awareness Week, and thank you for coming here. Would you like to say anything? Please do.
On behalf of the Angie MF Community Development Corporation and the Central Jersey Diaper Bank, I thank the county commissioners for your recognition of this week. Diaper need is a pervasive issue affecting members of the Middlesex County community, and we are honored at the Central Jersey Diaper Bank to play a small part in diminishing that need in our community. Thank you very much.
Okay, if we could have now the Middlesex College softball team and coaches and manager, come on up. Call it here, I guess. This is really, this is really, really nice and commendable because I was a, I'm a former softball coach myself and my kids when they were younger take a lot of pride in what all the coaches do and the players do because it's a great sport and it's doing a great thing. We want to recognize the college softball team, the Blue Coat softball team. They made a final national ranking of number eight in the country. That's really, really commendable. They finished the season, the regular season, with 23 and 7. And they defeated Gloucester County, yes, two games in a row, so that gives us bragging rights. Absolutely. And to capture the region 19 North Atlantic District B championship. And the team was one of just eight schools in the country who qualified to compete in the NJCAA Division III College Softball World Series in Syracuse, New York. And then it's, this is the first time since 1981 that the college Blue Coat softball team was a regional champion. And head coach Jim Modami was named Region 19 Coach of the Year, and sophomore pitcher Caitlin McCarthy was named Region 19 Most Valuable Player. So on behalf of the county commissioners, we want to congratulate you all for a tremendous season. You'll never forget this season, right? And we want to thank you for, to the coaches and the manager for really bringing this team together and taking it to another level. So we want to thank you and congratulate you. Coach, you want to say something?
Sure.
Say a few words.
Sure. Thank you very much for having us. We are very appreciative of this and all the support that we've gotten throughout the year. It was obviously an historic accomplishment, first time anyone has ever done this. It was really exciting being up there with teams from all over the country. We played a team from North Dakota, played a team from Minnesota, and we played a team from Anthony, and a team from New York. Stayed in motel, we were there four or five nights, we had our, you know, athletic administrative team up there with us, supporting us. It was just a whirlwind thing. We made it through the entire season with 11 girls. Obviously, they're at different places now. I'm appreciative of the girls who are behind me, and every one of them contributed to our season, and thank, thank God we didn't have any major injuries, but it was just an awesome experience, and we hope to keep on continuing it. And any, you know, pennies, dollars, anything to support us on our field and everything else is always greatly appreciated. Thank you for having us. So, people.
And then you can take the rest to the others that are around here, and we can take a photo. Let's not forget Mr. Modami was a former coach at Edison High School and brought that team, the baseball team, to many state championships. He didn't hear me?
I heard you.
Okay. We can take a two-minute recess if you'd like to leave, if you don't want to stay for the meeting, you want to walk and leave. And of course, you want to walk and stay in the hall.
Thank you again.
Okay, our correspondents.
Mr. President, this is a surprise that this correspondent received by the third class since our last meeting. This correspondent will be kept on family walkways for work of the board for records.
So a motion to accept the correspondence.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Minutes for approval.
Minutes of September 1st, 2022, writing committee, and then the county.
Is there a motion to approve?
Second.
Ball call.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Rio?
Yes.
Of course, commissioners, County Commissioner Carr, Dallas, Conover.
Thank you, Director Rios. The 2022 Youth and Standing Conference on Mental Health and Addiction Recovery will take place virtually on Thursday, September 29th. This conference is offered every year with the support from the Governor's Center on Alcoholism and Drug Abuse and Brokers' Universities in celebration of National Recovery Month. We are delighted that Commissioner Director Rios will be there to provide open remarks this year. As hunger acts and months continue replenished, we'll be holding several events, including a counting wild food drive at all six Estoppin Chapel locations on Saturday, September 17th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. For our younger residents, we will inhabit a story and activity system at the East Brunswick Library on Thursday, September 22nd, at 7:00 p.m. To learn more about this and all our upcoming events and activities, please visit the county website. Thank you, and that will be our report for the next week.
Thank you. Commissioner Leslie Cockle?
Thank you, Director. Over the past 10 years, the Board of Commissioners have been committed to specific long-term and short-term fiscal strategies and policies when formulating annual budgets. The commitment has strengthened the county's financial well-being and has resulted over the years with stable growth in annual budgets, continuous reduction in total debt and aggregate debt, increase in surplus funds, and the creation of a pay as you go county program. These are just the few of the key fiscal health indicators. This continued commitment to maintain strong fiscal house is best demonstrated in two recent events. First, on tonight's agenda, Resolution 22-1255 accepts the 2021 county audit. An annual audit is an independent, objective, third-party inspection of the 2021 fiscal transactions and records of the 29 counties, with particular focus on clients and appearance to specific fiscal indicators. Once again, there are no auditor recommendations, and this is a direct reflection of the sound fiscal operations of Middlesex County. Secondly, I am happy to report that this afternoon, Standard and Poor's Global Rating once again affirmed to Middlesex County a AAA bond rating, the highest rating attainable. This rating is also a direct result of the established county policies and strategies. With this confirmation, the county will maintain the AAA bond rating for an unprecedented 21st year in a row. It is estimated that during this period, the rating saved caps up to more than $50 million. These savings are realized by borrowing funds at lower interest rates. They also are passed on to municipalities that join the county lease purchasing program. That concludes my report.
Thank you, Director. Commissioner Deputy Director Shanti Naras?
Thank you, Commissioner Director. From our environmental, solid waste, and recycling divisions, we have several upcoming events. On Saturday, September 17th, the division will conduct a household hazardous waste event at Middlesex County's Public Works located at 750 Germany Mill Road in Sarvo from 8:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m., and this is rain or shine. Residents may bring free of charge household hazardous materials such as paints, insecticides, motor oil, car batteries, propane tanks, and the like for safe disposal and recycling, thus preserving a greener Middlesex County. And then the following Saturdays, September 24th, the divisions will hold a paper shred event. This program will be held at South Plainfield's Kennedy Elementary School located at 2900 Norwood Avenue in the Borough. All paper shred events are held between the hours of 9:00 a.m. and noon, or until the trucks are full. Residents may bring, again, free of charge, all paper items for safe shredding and recycling, and thus protecting one's personal information and identity. Please only include paper items, as metals and the like can disable the shredding devices. For additional information on these or any program, please visit the county's website or call our divisions at 732-745-4170. And from the Office of the Sheriff, Sheriff Mildred Scott is excited to announce the success of the Middlesex County Sheriff's Office's fourth DARE program, DARE Junior Academy this summer. The program ran for two weeks from August 15th to the 26th, and was held from 8:30 morning to 3:00 p.m. Monday through Friday. The junior academy slash DARE class was held at the Middlesex County Fire Academy, which is located at 1001 Fire Academy Drive in Sarvo. The daily routine presented academy-like scheduling. Mornings consisted roughly of roll called platoon formation, DARE lessons in lunch. Afternoons consisted of drills, and Sheriff Mildred Scott welcomes each, a visit from the State Police Aviation Unit, the Motor Vehicle Stop's Unit, first aid, fire and safety lessons, and a speech from a high school student, Project Saber, K9 demo, gang presentation, and a talk with a superior court judge, as well as lessons on the effects of drunk driving and physical training. The sheriff's academy had 45 victims, six graders attend the camp, and they all represented 18 different municipalities in the county. It was an extremely successful program, and I know the kids got a lot out of it, and I hope to keep continuing it. That's all I have to make.
Thank you. Commissioner Joel Tannen?
Thank you, Director. Our youth conservation corps just finished another successful summer season working in our conservation areas and reserves. This summer, they maintained a 25-mile existing trails with touching up trail markings, repairing, replacing drainage, repairing the tread of the trails, and removing debris. The crew began building a new trail in the Ironland Conservation Area in East Brunswick. If you could help us finish this trail at our first full volunteer event, join us on Saturday, September 24th, at the National Public Lands Day from 9:00 to noon. Blazing Park. This October, Blazing Park Annual Full Children's Show is presented in pinkalicious. Bring your family to see the tale based on a popular book. The show runs on weekends in October, between October 1st through the 16th, with two shows each day, at 1:00 p.m. and 4:00 p.m. Tickets are on sale now and going fast, so don't miss out. The sold tickets are $3, and children, children under 12, children 12 and under are $2. Roosevelt Family Roller Rink is open again for the fall season. The outdoor rink is open Fridays and Saturdays from 6:00 p.m. to 8:00 p.m. From now until October 29th, bring roller blades or rent a pair of our skates and enjoy the beautiful fall nights, roller skating under the stars. Information about these events and our parks and programs can be found at the Middlesex County website, Parks and Recreation page. That concludes my report.
Thank you. I have a few comments. I'd just like to announce that, and bring recognition that this is Hispanic Heritage Month, which starts September 15th, today through October 15th, and celebrates the history, culture, and contributions of Americans of Hispanic ancestry. And it's to bring recognition that all those folks that have made contributions to the United States and to the world. And a few things that I'd like to mention is, a few people, it's like the 65th Infantry Regiment, which was, they would call the Boricaniers, and they served during World War II and Korea. And they were, the unit motto is Honor et Fidelitas, which is Latin for honor and fidelity. We know a lot of famous people, whether Hispanics that are either sports figures, politicians, different personalities, but let's not forget about those that make contributions every day, between police officers, and teachers, and artists, and writers. And one such individual that was as famous as I here in Middlesex County is our former Middlesex County Freeloader, who was the first Hispanic councilwoman in New Brunswick, and the first freeloader for Middlesex County, Conquita Valenti. And she is sorely missed, and she made a great contribution to Middlesex County. On another note, I'd just like to mention that this past week, I was honored to join Congressman Frank Pallone at the County College, because he was being honored with the Paige Lomond Award, and my colleagues were there also to recognize the congressman's contributions. He's a dedicated advocate for his district, which includes Middlesex County. And on a little bittersweet, because just a few weeks ago, the former chair of the Board of Trustees for the college, Doc Powers, passed away a few weeks back, and she would definitely have been there, but she was a great public servant. She served on the freeloader board here, and she was a big advocate for Middlesex College and really made a difference in a lot of people's lives. Okay, Mr. Kelso, do we have any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be amended?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be held?
There are none.
Any resolutions to be voided?
There are none.
At this time, I open the meeting to the public. For anyone to make comments, I'm only on resolutions that are listed. You state your name, address, and you have five minutes.
Good evening, Commissioners. Charlie Cradville from New Brunswick, editor of the community newspaper, New Brunswick Today, available online at newbrunswicktoday.com. Start on page three with the labor agreement with the planning professionals, 22-1229R. Can I just get the basics of what this agreement entails, annual raises, et cetera?
Are you aware, I don't, I don't have any information. Pat, are you aware?
It's aligned with all the other county, as if you are in front of the other ones.
And these are the last ones that are going to be?
These are the smallest organizations. Yeah, the small, not many.
Yeah, I guess we could get that to you, Father Mayor, Dave Charlie.
It's the same package that I'll do. I know there've been a lot of folks from the college coming here, asking for contracts, right? Has that been resolved, or now is it, you don't consider that part of it?
It has nothing to do with this resolution, so talk about the resolution.
Well, it was stated that this is the last one.
This is the last one that's under our jurisdiction.
Okay, just wanted to clarify. Move on to page seven. This is a significant sum of money, $1.6 million, to work with Rutgers.
Which money are you talking about, Charlie?
Yeah, 1263.
1263, okay.
And so I wanted to ask, what is happening here? I see this is strategic plan development support for Phase Two and Three, but you're amending a resolution from the summer of 2020. Can I just understand what's happening?
Mr. Director?
Charlie, this is related to Destiny 2044, narrowing completion, we're just running out of time, so no change to the 1.6 million, which is associated with Destiny.
Gotcha. Well, I am anxiously awaiting the conclusion of this process, because as I've mentioned before, the county bus route that was the most popular one serving the city of New Brunswick has been out of service for years now. And I will ask about that on my next resolution, because I see MCAT is here for, Resolution 1273 at the bottom of page eight. Apparently, a grant with NJ Transit for operating MCAT for the next coming year. Can I ask, when is that M5 shuttle coming back, or when is New Brunswick going to get bus service from the county?
Commissioner Director, the M5 shuttle is not guaranteed to come back. We're doing an analysis, and we'll be submitting to the Board, Commissioner Board, our recommendations for a new shuttle, for new shuttle servicing coordination between college and university in New Brunswick. So, do we have an answer to that? Or will we have an analysis?
When will that be submitted?
I can say within a year.
Okay, because people in New Brunswick, there's many of us here that do not have vehicles, just on demand to get wherever we need to go, and, you know, for better or worse, it wasn't the best route, I'll admit. The M5 needed a lot of work, and I had some good ideas for how to improve it, but, you know, just eliminating it for years at a time is not the way to get people to use public transit, and unfortunately, the folks who depended on that don't really have an option now, so it's unfortunate. I also see NJ Transit have volunteered, are they going to come through on those bus shelters for Livingston Avenue?
It's important to this room, but not both. I can give you a small update with the case, Commissioner. There was an issue with the Historic Office, they wanted to weigh in on the type of shelter in the Livingston Avenue district, so that did some delay in time. We will continue to pursue those shelters that they can install.
Okay, just to be clear, is it the Historical Association or the Historical Society?
Charlie, just stay with the resolution. Okay, you're trying to stretch, you know?
Just trying to get information. It's not, it's not an appropriate question to ask. I'd like to get the answer, but if you will allow me to answer, I'll move on to 1278. I was not expecting to see a foreign policy matter on the agenda tonight. Why are we giving eight ballistic vests to a police official in North Brunswick so he can send them to a foreign country?
First of all, I would think it's a humanitarian thing, but I'll let Joe.
Ballistics vests?
Go ahead, Joe.
These are ballistic vests that have been expired, which you no longer use internally, so we have created with county chiefs around the county to give these vests to people that might need them and serve in them well.
Okay, who might those people be? The military, the police, paramilitary groups? What group is getting them?
People in Ukraine.
Just, just people.
Just going to drop them out of the plane and let them?
Your time is up, Charlie.
Well, this seems like.
Answer it. Ask that question in the public portion. Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, this is Danielle from the Middlesex Street. First, I'm looking into, let's see, starting off with dash 1241 all the way down. I see that these are a lot of grants dealing with alcoholism and drug abuse, due to where I'm just pretty wondering like, wow, why you brought it into business for a grant, even though I haven't been here for the past, maybe something like this, but I'm like, wow, out of all the locations that I'm really reading, due to where a lot of these locations don't even deal with drugs and alcohol like New Brunswick. So if you could tell me?
This is.
If you could just explain to me, how did, how did you come up with these locations out of, out of Middlesex County?
This is a grant that came from the state, and the state determined that it was going to be distributed to the municipal alliances, so all participating communities that have municipal alliances with Middlesex County received $5,000 for this grant. New Brunswick received $5,000 at the September 1st meeting after that contract is executed. It's specific to youth development activities, so it's very specific things that can be done. The city of New Brunswick is using it for a mentoring program called Heroes and Cool Kids.
Okay, thank you very much. Perfect. And then, once again, I will speak on 1249 with Section 8 with the housing with these landlords, due to where I mentioned to you before, and believe me, like I said, wow, do I really have to come down here and bring, start bringing pictures, due to where I'm being questioned by a lot, due to where I blame it on New Brunswick inspectors, due to where they're not inspectors inspecting these houses properly, and I have to say, at a lot of these locations that are working with Section 8. Come on, why, I'll tell you for example, why did I have to come down to City Hall and really threaten, to say something, due to where, towards the city-county, due to where what? It's their buddy, I'm not going to mention name on here, their friend that owns the house, wow, had this everything fall off, how in the world did New Brunswick pass inspection? So my point is, and then after I said, oh, do I have to bring the pictures in the show? Wow, then that's when the inspectors came back the next day, and then, ooh, my sister got a brand new kitchen? But will you understand what I'm saying, please? Due to where, like I said, do I really have to start bringing pictures to prove it? Make sure the people that are getting paid through Section 8, these landlords, are taking care of their property the right way, because I will say, even not connected to here, what? It's an issue with this building, due to where, wow, leakage and the roaches on top of where you, where you are, and what the gentleman just spoke at City Council on that, what, all the water leaking through the windows. Please, come on, these landlords are getting a decent price, and they should be able to keep up on their, their property. And New Brunswick is doing a horrible job, but due to where you're part of this, please make sure New Brunswick starts doing their job, due to where, wow, I don't work for the city, but like I said, do I have to bring pictures in to show you? Wow, how did New Brunswick even pass inspection? Do I really have to do that to prove to you, or will you just please stay on top of New Brunswick, making sure these landlords do the right thing?
Melissa, am I, am I correct to say that these things are monitored also by the federal government?
It's the federal government, and we run, what's on here is a Section 8 program that's run through the county, so it's not specific to New Brunswick. We have some, some residents that will live in New Brunswick. New Brunswick also has their own program with their own inspectors. We have an inspector for the, the housing choice vouchers that come through our office, and he doesn't work with the state of New Brunswick, he works for the county of Middlesex, and his work is monitored both internally as well as by the federal government or monitored. So if it's somebody who's on one of the Middlesex County vouchers, you can have them contact us. We work with the municipalities and landlords when we find deficiencies in the apartments, and they're inspected at least twice a year, more often if there's a, if a client moves, or if they call with concerns and questions about their, their location.
Thank you so much for explaining everything. Thank you.
Thank you. Motion closed. All in favor? Coats? Motion carries? Okay, anyone have to vote on anything separately?
I agree, Director. I have to, Resolution 22-1273R, I have to stay on that due to my position.
Anyone else? Mr. Kelso?
Yes, Director, the motion would then be in order to adopt consent to Jem Day consisting of Resolution numbers 22-1226, new Resolution 22-1298, excluding Resolution 22-1273, if other content.
Is there a motion? Ball call?
County Commissioner Esco de Barre?
Yes.
County Commissioner Havel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Yes.
County Commissioner Flaherty?
Yes.
County Commissioner Dr. Rio?
Yes. And that director would be appropriate to consider the resolution was issued by Commissioner Nara, that's Resolution 22-1273. Is there a motion? Ball call?
County Commissioner Esco de Barre?
Yes.
County Commissioner Havel?
Yes.
County Commissioner Nara?
Present and not present.
County Commissioner Dr. Rio?
Yes. At this time, I open up the meetings to the public. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Sid Patterson from Biscataway. I'm here on the same subject as I was here last month. My purpose is to get the county commissioners to prod the governor, to act a moratorium on all fossil fuel projects in New Jersey. My sign recaps what I told you last, last time, and what I'm going to address this time is why you should, why. is why you should do this rather than the detail. First, I want to go back to a new book that's come out called Big Fix. It's basically the same message that I saw in an op-ed in the New York Times in September of 2011. And the basic premise of both of these things are we have to make systemic changes. They have priority over individual changes. The difference between 2011 and 2022 is we're now at, let me call it, the two-minute warning. The two-minute warning says that people, everyone, including individuals and members of society up the ladder, and I would consider the two commissioners up the ladder and the governor up the next level, and they're asking you to represent us and ask the governor to make these changes. We're at the two-minute warning. It's important. You saw, two-thirds of Pakistan is underwater. Things like that are going to get worse. And what we have to do is make systemic change. And the systemic change for New Jersey is for you guys to ask the governor to make the systemic change that I mentioned last time. So you're saying that there is a responsibility of individuals and up the ladder that have more pull in the system to make those demands of the people further up in the chain of command to get things done. So that's my message.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Hi, yes, Danielle Moore, Somerset Street. First question I would like to do to everyone who's not able to provide me an answer when I ask. I know about two or three months ago, the county had received $200,000 dealing with homelessness. I spoke as a one. If I can please give an answer, how much did New Brunswick get? Did they get their part of the money yet for the homelessness?
Melissa, can you answer that?
I'm not sure exactly which funding we're talking about, but we received money that was going for the COCs and the homelessness programs in New Brunswick. So it wouldn't be the city of New Brunswick particularly that would get funding through ours. It would be programs that serve New Brunswick. So it would be like Catholic Charities at the Ozamind Shelter, Elijah's Promise that does food. I'm not specific, I don't know specifically what.
Maybe I'll try to find the, no, like, I spoke about it where there was a pro unemployed in New Brunswick that had the most homeless, and then the city...
Oh, through the homeless.
I only, I only, I'll go by two of them.
That's right.
I'll get that to you on that. But yes, I'm asking that, please, due to where the kids are back to school far as Livingston Avenue, if the timers on the walkway can be set automatically the way that they were before, where you don't have to press the button to see either walk and do not walk? I do ask that. I would like to ask, what is these cameras for on the lights, at the traffic lights? Due to where, do they take pictures of people? Like, may go on red? What's the purpose of these cameras?
First of all, there's no more tickets given out for those cameras. It's timers to turn the light from red to green or green to red.
So that's all those cameras that are, that's before?
Yes, Danielle, the cameras on the arms of the traffic signals are to detect the presence of traffic so that they can...
Okay, thank you. I understand now, I know, due to where walking, how it changes so quickly, like, oh, it's mighty pressing buttons. And I understand what you're saying. Thank you for explaining. And then, due to where, I'm not sure, is Hamilton Street and Eastern Avenue part of your project with the redoing the sidewalks?
Yes, it is.
Well, okay, due to where, I tell you, I have one that's really in, I'll bring it in, bring the pictures for the next meeting, due to where, I'm really worried, due to where, the way they changed the angle of the walkway, and the car's coming around too quick, due to where it's like a blind zone. I will bring the picture now that I know that it's the county and not the city that's doing that. I'm very nervous with that, due to where I think you should really change the angle of the walkway. I will bring the pictures, and then if, if I can ask, Mr. Ron Sanders, may you come here for a moment, please?
Can I what?
Can you come here for a moment, please?
Why do you need to be here?
Because I would like to give him a gift, okay? It's, wow, are you really going to kill time to make me? Just because I want to give him a gift? A gift, that's wild to him.
Well, you could go present it to him.
Well, okay, yes, due to where, I know you said your favorite color is gray. I'm just a little behind with your picture right now, because my mom is sick, but I still, like I said, thank you for all the hard work that you're putting in, taking the time seriously to help make New Brunswick safe. Really, this is what I had my camera for before I had my accident, but this is my hobby. And I would just like to present this one to you, and I say thank you for all the help you have been doing with New Brunswick and making New Brunswick safe.
You're doing wonders for my ego.
I'd just say thank you.
Thank you. Please state your name and address, and you have five minutes.
Charlie Cradville, New Brunswick, New Brunswick Today. I'll also just take a moment to thank Mr. Senator Danielle for her work as well. So I do have to follow up on the issue we spoke about last time. I understand Mr. Thomas Palando has resigned from the Middlesex County Planning Board in the wake of the bribery charges that were filed against him. Have the commissioners chosen a replacement for Mr. Palando?
At this time, not yet.
Okay. I know you, sir, are a member of the planning board. Is anybody else on this board that's also on the planning board?
I believe Commissioner McKinnney.
Got it. So in his absence, I'd like to ask you, do you support an investigation into all of the projects that Mr. Palando approved in his position on the planning board?
First of all, it's not my position to take. It's, if there's any kind of improprieties, that's up to the prosecutor's office, and the prosecutor's office is doing an investigation.
Well, I support this investigation.
The prosecutors are aware that Mr. Palando sat on the county planning board. And if they feel that there's anything that they need to research or review or investigate, I'm sure that they will do it.
Do you happen to know how long he was on that board?
I don't know.
Okay. It's just serious cause for concern, right? Man's charged with bribery. The authorities say they caught him red-handed with the cash, and that they have recordings of him saying he would use his influence to try to make, to try to affect the outcome of a criminal investigation. And, you know, that kind of behavior is really brazen. And it wouldn't surprise me if it was not the first time that bribes were exchanged. And, you know, obviously, he was a powerful man. So I'm calling for an investigation. I think you should join me in that call. I think everybody who wants a clean government that's not corrupt should demand an investigation into all of the projects that he approved in his role on the county planning board, and all the projects he approved in his hometown, Sayerville, where he settled the Sayerville Economic redevelopment agency. Now, I learned Mr. Palando was arrested on August 17th, but of course, the news was not shared with the public until September 1st, just while I was hopping in the car to come here and see you. And, you know, you seemed to be prepared